All right, I think we're ready to resume. I see our third applicant, I hope, has arrived. Mr. Peterson, David, if you can come on up and have a seat. Thanks for coming in today.
Thank you very much for having me here today.
Good. So we'll go through a series of questions that the board members will ask, that every applicant has been asked, and we'll, after that, be making our decision. You're the last applicant of the day. So why don't you briefly tell us about yourself, David, and why you're interested in the position as Carson City Executive Director of the Culture and Tourism Authority?
Thank you, Chairman Jones. For the record, David Peterson. Right now, I am the interim director of the Nevada Department of Tourism and Cultural Affairs, which is, I think, the best department in state government. We are selling Nevada to anybody and everybody around the world, and I love tourism, to be honest with you. My entire career has been in tourism, in the gaming industry, up at Caesar's Tahoe, before I came to work for the Division of Tourism, or the Commission on Tourism, as it was called at the time. And as I always say to people, people want to come and visit Nevada, and I love the idea of selling an experience to people and giving them something to kind of take home and remember their trip to Nevada by. So this opportunity, when it came up here for the executive director with the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority, was very unique from the standpoint that it would provide an opportunity to market one area. Right now, I have to market the entire state, which, as you can imagine, is a very big state, and sometimes it's difficult to deal with all the interests out there, and the urban areas and the rural areas, of course, of Nevada. So the idea to be able to focus all of my energy on Carson City would be a wonderful experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell us about a project where you brought together multiple groups of people who had either different interests, socioeconomic and/or cultural backgrounds.
Well, I have with me some copies of the Nevada, the first ever Nevada Arts, Culture and Heritage Guide. Joel, could I ask you to pass those out? This is the first time that the Division of Tourism has ever put together a piece like this, and it required me to work not only with the tourism staff, but also Division of Museums and History, so Peter Barton and the museum directors, Sherry Rupert with the Nevada Indian Commission, as well as Tony Manfredi with the Nevada Arts Council, and we also involve Nevada Magazine in this project. So as you can imagine, this being the first piece of its kind, everybody wanted it to be about their particular area, you know, and I appreciated the team for wanting it to be their piece, right? Because it's the first time where we've been able to really bring the department together to prepare a piece like this for visitors. And so it's kind of managing everybody's expectations, I think, was a big part of this particular project. And I'm happy to say, I think the piece turned out amazingly well. It's won some national awards. We worked with Meredith was the company that we worked with, and they just picked up a national award. I don't remember exactly what the name of the award was, but it's been well-received. I think the thing that I'm super happy about in terms of the team coming together, it's a print piece, right? But we live in a digital age, and one of the things that I have really, really pushed the team to do is, even with a print piece, I want it to have a digital element, a digital component to it. And so the cover of the Arts, Culture, Heritage Guide is augmented reality-based. So there's an app, Layar, L-A-Y-A-R, an app that you can download on your phone, and when you hover over the guide, the elder, Ralph Burns, he comes to life doing a traditional Native American, American Indian dance, which I think is just a great way to engage people digitally with their phones through a print piece. And then in addition, we have these other content that we obviously couldn't fit into the print piece, available through a website as well. So this was a great opportunity, again, for the whole department to come together and to share their different experiences, share with one another artists and museums and the different arts, culture, heritage components of the whole state of Nevada, and to really, really put together, I think, what was a fantastic piece showcasing arts, culture, heritage for the state of Nevada. And again, it was our first go-around with this, and we plan on putting out another piece next year as well, and we'll make it even better, and again, engaging the communities out there. So that was, I think, a great experience in terms of people wanting to do some different things, different backgrounds within the department, that we were able to really work together, pull together as a team to produce this piece.
How do you see tourism playing a significant and positive role with the ongoing revitalization of our downtown and our community as a whole?
Well, I'm very excited about what's going on in the downtown area, I think, with the corridor, the street, obviously being reduced to a couple of lanes, the Adams Hub. I think Carson City is situated very well as we move forward with not only what we're doing on a statewide basis, but I think for Carson City as well, to engage a different type of visitor. I think, right now, Carson City has some amazing, amazing attractions and activities that people can engage in. We have two state museums here. We have the main state museum. We also have the railroad museum. You have VNT, and I know that's not in the downtown corridor area. Amazing art scene now, and I think food and beverage is amazing with the restaurants that we have in the Carson City area. I'm excited about what's happening out at Fandango with the convention center that's going to be coming along here shortly. I think that gives us a new business element to our tourism component as well, and then engaging those folks in the downtown area. Really, you know, we work in the Laxalt Building, so we're right in the middle of it, and I get to see what happens with the different events that take place in Carson City, and I like what I see. You know, I think for so long, I'll speak for Travel Nevada, or on behalf of Travel Nevada, we were really so focused on the outdoor visitor, and we kind of let go of the arts and the culture and the heritage of the state, and that is very, very appealing to visitors, whether it's domestic visitors or international visitors, who really want to engage with the Western culture. And I think Nevada kind of stands out among the 11 Western states. I had the privilege of being in Japan and South Korea in July, and then I just came back from India in September, and the conversation was really, honestly, all about Western culture, about having an authentic cowboy experience, authentic American Indian experience. And we're right in the middle of it here in Carson City. I think we bring together the history of the railroads as well here in Carson City, which is also something that is very appealing to people, not only domestically, but also internationally as well. We just, using an example of railroads, our post-governor's Global Tourism Summit fam, we took the buyers, travel agents, tour operators from around the world on this effort out to Elko. So they went out on the train, were able to see a large swath of northern Nevada, which normally they kind of only see the close-in areas, you know, might be Reno and Tahoe, and they did see Carson City, don't worry, in Carson Valley, but to also be able to showcase some of our other areas in the northeastern part of the state was fantastic. So honestly, Carson City is poised to do very, very, very well in terms of getting at that cultural traveler. We know cultural travelers spend more money. They're a little older, so they have that discretionary income, but they stay longer, they spend more money, and I think we have a great opportunity here. There's so much to do in this area that we may be able to push a second visit, you know, that's what we always talk about at Travel Nevada. How do we get somebody to come back? You know, people look forward to something new, right, a new experience, and I think if you can tease people to come here to Nevada and see what we have to offer, but leave them wanting a little something more to come back and make that second, third, fourth trip, I think that's a wonderful thing. And I think Carson City, this entire region, this area, has that going for them. So I really like, you know, what Joel and the team have done here, to embrace arts and culture and heritage, using the existing assets that we have. And then the last thing I would add too, and you may have heard this earlier potentially from Sherry, but the Stewart facility and what we've got coming next summer with the cultural and the welcome centers. I know that's not in the downtown area, but I think that's going to be just an amazing experience for people to have. And again, that came up during my travels to Japan and South Korea and India, and got some very excited people who want to engage with the Stewart facility out there and have that kind of an authentic experience, so thank you.
Just a follow-up question to that. How would you increase the Carson, or the Cultural and Tourism Authority's stakeholder engagement?
Well, I think it starts with communication with the different stakeholders throughout this region, engaging them, being a part of the meetings. So, you know, that's, whether it's Reno-Tahoe territory, if it's the chamber, if it's the city, I think another opportunity for CCCTA is the Regional Air Service Corporation, which we're a part of right now as Travel Nevada, but that is all about flights, you know, bringing in, you know, butts, right, seats, whether they're domestic flights or international flights. So I think it's being visible, engaging with those folks, and sharing with them what we may be doing with our marketing to understand what they're doing with their marketing. I think I would take the same approach that we do with Travel Nevada, which is, again, sharing collectively our resources, pooling data where possible as well. That's something that has worked very well with the RASC, which is the Regional Air Service Corporation, but to share our visitor data from the standpoint of looking at zip code analysis, where are the visitors coming from, and engaging everybody to do just that, so collectively, we can pool our resources and leverage our dollars, so we're not stepping over one another, right, where, you know, we're running a search campaign here, they're running a search campaign, and we're sort of cannibalizing each other's spend. So I think talking, you know, if I had to boil it down to one thing, talking with one another, understanding what plans do the other partners have coming up, and sharing with them what our plans would be too. You're welcome.
Okay, well, my question is this. In December of 2015, Carson City opened up the MAC. With over 24,000 square feet of open space, what type of events do you feel the CTA should recruit to realize the potential return on investment for Carson City's tourism industry?
I think festivals, arts-related events, you know, whether that's showcasing different artists from around northern Nevada or the state of Nevada would prove to be very, very return on investment-driven. I think it goes back to what I was saying before. If you can engage somebody to come to an event, and you're appealing to their sense of they like arts, or they like culture, to get them to come for an event one time, I think you can hook people because of all the different activities that you can also engage in in this entire area, and that, you know, includes Carson Valley and Tahoe, Reno. But I think I would like to focus on different arts-related events, you know, bringing in artists, bringing in exhibits as well, maybe something that we could look at doing too. I know we do some of this, obviously, with the Nevada Arts Council. We have our traveling exhibits series that we do, and that goes in and around the state. Another idea may be to, and this goes back to Burning Man, so we have the outdoor art, right, where we have the different installations from Burning Man that right now are in Reno, I want to say Fallon and Fernley, but maybe bringing some of those pieces to Carson City and maybe showcasing them at the MAC as well to allow the visitor to engage. If they can't get to Burning Man, well, now you can kind of share a little bit of that Burning Man experience. So that might be another option as well that I would recommend. Thank you.
All right, David, could you tell us about your experience developing and administering grants?
So my specific experience as it relates to grants is on the administration and development of the actual system itself. So as you may all be familiar, we have two grant programs. We have a marketing grant program, and then we have a projects relating to tourism grant program at Travel Nevada that is administered and approved through the Nevada Commission on Tourism. My role started early on after I started, to be honest with you, with Commission on Tourism, working with the Rural Programs Manager, I don't know, maybe 14, 15 years ago, and that was twofold. One was to bring accountability to the grant program itself through data collection, and I'll address that in just a second. The second element was to move our grant system from paper-based to an online system. I'm not a programmer, so I can't take credit for the programming that was put into place to have an online grant system where people could apply and then, of course, submit their grants for evaluation. But it was to move us forward into sort of, again, the digital age, but then also to have, again, the reporting that I feel is necessary for any good grant system. It's, you get the garbage in, garbage out, right? And, you know, my background as the research director is always to, was always to help us drive highest and best use of our money, return on investment for those grant dollars, and identify the best events or the best marketing buys, and to help our rural partners. So how did I do that? By working with the Rural Programs Manager at the time to put together the appropriate set of questions that we would want to not only ask on the application itself, but also as an evaluation, from an evaluation standpoint, right? So we could quantify the impact of the rural programs that we do have in place today. So again, from a development and administration standpoint, I was a part of the team that just relaunched the new application evaluation online system, so we just launched that, I want to say that was last November, so I think that was for the second cycle fiscal 18 grant system, so that we have a new online application process in place. And right now, we're actually working on the regulations around the grant program, so I'm working with the team on that. We're also going to bring in an outside evaluator as well, just to help us with guidelines, and then help us also with data, you know, because I'm not perfect. Sometimes I miss some things that maybe we should be looking at, including, you know, and asking our grant recipients to provide that feedback and that data on. So again, from my perspective, it's been the administration and the development of grant programs. I'm happy to speak a little bit about the Nevada Arts Council as well, working with Tony Manfredi there. We just had a meeting, I think it was a week or so ago, again, looking at the regulations for the various grant programs that we have with the Nevada Arts Council as well, and Tony and I are working, are looking at holistically the different types of grants that are available for award to folks, and trying to fine-tune those grant processes as well to get the best data, again, that we can get back, to help us know, hey, which programs actually help, right, our constituents out there in Nevada? So from that perspective as well, it's kind of been on the administration side, but I don't have any issue applying for a grant or anything like that and writing up a grant application. In fact, I would feel very comfortable if it were to be anything through the Arts Council or Travel Nevada, having been on the other side of it, knowing exactly what it is I'm currently looking for, you know, in a grant application, so, and what I would expect in terms of the evaluation process after the grant has been expended, so.
And then a follow-up. Can you give us an example of a grant-funded project you think could benefit the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority and why?
So I think one, and again, this would be from a collaborative perspective, one thing that CCCTA should definitely take a look at is a joint effort with the Nevada Indian Commission and Travel Nevada as it relates to the cultural and the welcome centers coming online next summer out at Stewart. I think that is definitely something that could serve this particular community very well. I think that would be something marketing-related, whether that's, you know, search-related or digital advertising-related. I think that would be an excellent application that I think would be well-received by the Travel Nevada Sales and Industry Partner Team. The other thing too, that I think could be considered maybe a grant for some additional web development work on the Visit Carson City website. Again, this is just my opinion, but an observation that I have based on going through the website would be to decouple the industry partner side of the website from the consumer-facing side of what CCCTA is responsible for doing. So I think that would be an excellent grant application to potentially submit for Travel Nevada and the Commission on Tourism's consideration as well. So those would be two different suggestions I would have off the top of my head.
David, what do you consider as Carson City's top culture and tourism assets?
So from my perspective, from a culture and arts-related mindset, I really think what's going on with the Adams Hub is fantastic. I think nothing but opportunity there. You guys, we also have the Carson City, the state museum for Carson City. We have the railroad museum as well, again, at the state railroad museum. We have VNT, soon-to-come, the Stewart facility, as we've already talked about. And I think another opportunity too is with the new Battleborn Exhibit Hall at the Capitol that just, as you know, came online in October. It's an amazing, we packed a lot of stuff. I give Peter and Barton and the team a lot of credit for what they were able to do with that space and turning that into, I think, just an amazing, amazing exhibit area. And what it does is it almost encourages, it begs the visitor to then see the state museum, kind of tease you with the small space that we have and the exhibits that are available over there, but it really begs you to go and see the state museum and engage with the amazing, amazing exhibits and artifacts that we have on display at the state museum. So I think those are great assets. The other thing too, the location. You know, if I could just speak maybe for a second about Carson City geographically, we're right in the middle of everything. And what I mean by that is, you know, on the statewide level, and I'll kind of relate this to how I would approach this, I think, on the CCCTA level, but we use Reno and Sparks, and we use Las Vegas kind of as that hook, right, for visitors domestically as well as internationally. And I look at Carson City, and I almost see, this is like a hub right here, right? And you can get up to Tahoe if you want to go to Tahoe, you can get down to the Carson Valley area, you want to get up to Virginia City, you want to get out to Fallon, you know, you want to go to Reno. I really think, I know this strays a little bit from the question about the arts and culture aspect of it, but really, this is a cultural hub, and it allows you, I think, to go out and experience other arts and culture heritage-related, whether it's a location, or an activity, or a festival, or an event, or whatever the case may be, and everything is within about a half an hour, you know, of Carson City. So again, kind of going back to an earlier question, I think the location too of Carson City lends itself very nicely to being this arts, culture, heritage-related hub right here. Half an hour, you can be into all these different locations, and so I think that's another great opportunity, you know. So if you would like me to expand on anything, I'm happy to do that, but those would be the highlights of what I see from an arts and cultural perspective.
Okay, so how could you improve the CTA's current marketing platform in an effort to extend our brand awareness?
Couple of different things come to mind. I think as a capital city, we skew a little older, you know, in terms of the visitor. I was looking at profile of the Carson City visitor. It comes in around 47 and a half years old, so it skews a little on the older side. So I think there's a couple of different ways that we can expand the brand, expand, you know, marketing efforts, I think, to engage a younger visitor, who I think would absolutely, if motivating them correctly and showing them the different activities and the different opportunities, I should say, that are available in Carson City to engage that younger, I want to say millennial visitor, because I know sometimes the M-word is a soft spot with people, but a younger visitor, shall we say, you know, maybe the millennial and a Gen X visitor, I think that would pay dividends, you know, for Carson City, brand-wise. I think to show that Carson City is hip, it's cool, maybe a little bit of mystery, you know, mystique to Carson City, I think that would be an amazing way to engage a younger visitor, without, again, taking away from the boomer, you know, and the older visitor, who I think still would love to see that. see that kind of play, right, with the brand and with Carson City. And, again, on the Travel Nevada side, we are, don't fence me in, you know, it's all about this idea of kind of breaking down barriers, right, to come to Nevada, be who you want to be. And we're not here to judge you. And I think Carson City, taking kind of a page out of that book, come to Carson City, engage with everything we have to offer here and in the surrounding areas, be who you want to be, you know, and we're not going to judge you. You know, if you want to come here, you want to ride the trains all day? Fantastic. You want to sit at the museum all day? Fantastic. You want to engage, obviously, there's a great sports tourism opportunity here as well. You want to engage that? Or you want to go out and you want to engage in hiking, skiing? Be who you want to be, you know? And I think the brand embracing that will bring additional visitors into the Carson City area. And I think, again, goes back to what I had said earlier, giving people a reason to come back again, you know, especially if it may be off-shoulder season, you know, I guess is the word we use, to generate that second visit that may not have been in the works, but to give people a reason to come back. And I think from a brand perspective, to kind of be that hip, that cool capital city, which I think we are, I think we're an amazing capital city, to be quite honest with you. Again, what we have to offer here, the location, I don't think it gets any better, you know, than that. So those would be a couple of things that I think we could, we could really, really engage and build on the brand equity that's already here in Carson City with respect to CCCTA.
Discuss your philosophy in the use of room tax in funding special events.
I think it's great because special events draw people in who come and they stay in hotels or RV parks and generate lodging tax revenue. So I think it's a great way to reinvest in the community, to reinvest in the various partners, whether those be the hoteliers, restaurants, the outfitters, you know, the proprietors who put on the different special events. Again, that's a big part of our marketing grant program, right, is investing in special events for rural Nevada communities to bring people into those communities to stay, whether it's, you know, I would say, at least get one night, right, out of people. But the idea to get people to come in for a weekend, to be here and engage in a special event, I do believe the idea should be, again, to showcase the community or the destination. And we look at this, you know, from, with respect to our grant programs. If, it's great, you know, if you have a show-and-shine or a car event or something along those lines, it's great that you're getting those folks to come here. But is there a way, again, to sell the community or sell the area so you can get those folks to come back again, outside of it being, you know, a car show weekend or something along those lines as far as a special event? But I'm for it. You know, I think it's an appropriate use of lodging tax money, given the fact that we know special events generate not only lodging tax revenue, but they're generating sales and use tax, they're generating entertainment tax, I know, depending on, you know, size of event and everything. But it's generating gaming tax dollars as well. So I think it's a, it's a way to drive all different elements of the economic impact of what a special event is for a particular community, so.
Just a follow-up to that. Should all special events that receive room tax funding be required to drive room nights?
That's a good question. My answer would be no, but I would prioritize those events that do drive lodging tax revenue because I do realize that there are some special events that are really like a, just a afternoon, right, or a day-long event. And I think they do serve a great purpose to get people, I would say Nevadans, out from their respective residences and communities to come and visit, let's say, Carson City, maybe some folks from Reno or Tahoe or Carson Valley area. So I do think that there's value in that as well, getting Nevadans to actually discover their Nevada and to get out and see what other communities have. So I think there's some value to that. Obviously, somebody coming to this community, even if it's for a day trip, they're still spending money, right? So, and I know, looking at the profile of a Carson City visitor, I think it's about 40% of the visitors to Carson City are day-trip. So, you know, I think that's, that's a very valid use of special events. I just think, you know, if you're looking at it from a prioritization standpoint or you're looking at some sort of, I guess, a rubric of scoring and evaluating the applications, I would put more weight on, you know, those events that would take place over the course of a weekend because, again, hypothetically speaking, they're going to generate additional or more revenue for the, for the city in this case and not just lodging tax revenue. Yeah, you're welcome.
Hi, David. Okay, so in 2016, the Carson City Board of Supervisors approved a 1% increase in transient occupancy tax to be dedicated to fund the CTA, its efforts to diversify its current offering and allow Carson City to compete in the cultural tourism market. Additionally, the funds were used to hire an arts and cultural coordinator, cover operational costs associated with the implementation of the Carson City Arts and Cultural Master Plan, okay? With this increase in room tax being approved with a five-year sunset clause, what outcomes, results would you work to achieve to ensure the CTA board recommends the continuation of the funding past 2021?
Well, I would hope, right now, that the different events, whether those are festivals or art-related exhibits, are being tracked in terms of the economic impact that's being brought in to Carson City or to this region as a result of the additional 1%. So I know Mark's probably still sitting back there, but the good work that Mark is doing in soliciting, bringing events, having these different exhibits in Carson City, I would, I would hope that we're tracking the economic impact of those events. You know, what does it mean for the community? Because I think you can put a return on investment against the cost, what that 1% looks like, to fund, you know, Mark and the arts and culture side of this, against the impact of set events, you know, that are taking place throughout the course of the year. So I would definitely like to see what that economic impact analysis looks like, you know. But I would add, you know, not, sometimes I put my research hat on, right, and I want to analyze everything, right? And I want to, you know, know that, that everything has a return on investment. But I also do realize, I can take a step back from that as well and realize, sometimes you just need to put some events on for the good of the community as well, right? And they may not generate as much revenue as you'd like or have a high enough ROI, but you know what? It's good for the community, you know, it's good for the residents, it's good for the citizens here as well. But I think to continue that funding and to justify that continued 1% or plus or minus or whatever the case may be, post, I think you said, 2021, looking at the, the impact of the events that have taken place as a result of Mark and, you know, his, his efforts would be a great starting point for me.
All right, David, could you define KPIs and indicate what you would consider the KPIs for Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority?
So KPIs for me are key performance indicators, is how I would define those. Some people say KPMs, key performance measures, but key performance indicators. And for Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority, for me, the first thing I would take a look at is our engagement, whether that's on the website, so conversions that are taking place on the website, conversions and the engagement with email databases on the consumer side of things. So I'll speak just to consumer-facing marketing and advertising efforts. I also think that we need to, and again, I don't know if CCCTA is doing this at present, so forgive me for not knowing the answer, but attribution modeling is something that I think is very, very important. It's beyond just that last-touch concept. So in other words, you know, what was the last digital ad or something that somebody clicked on to get them to your website? But to back up a few steps, what were the other ads? What were the other points of engagement that somebody had before they came to the website, before they booked a trip to Carson City? So I think that would be another KPI, is looking at setting up or building or expanding on, if there's already an attribution model in place, just to, again, tie all of the different elements of the marketing and the advertising that's already being done by CCCTA together. I think from a public relations standpoint, I would definitely like to see the measurement of the earned media that's being generated. So, you know, you're engaging with different digital publishers or print publishers, quantifying, you know, the value of that media beyond just impressions, you know? I think it's about what would that media have cost if you had to go out and purchase 10 pages in a Sunset magazine, you know, and you wanted to, instead you get a person to come out and they write all about what's going on out here in Carson City. The other thing, too, I think, I'll back up just a second, to the owned media side of things, you know, which would include the Visit Carson City website, but also the paid, excuse me, back up, the owned social media channels, you know, the Facebook and Twitter and Instagram, looking at the engagement that happens on the owned media channels as well, I think is another KPI. And that could be brought together with, with the website as well because they'd all be considered owned, you know, media sources. But those would be some, some high-level, based on just the marketing and the PR. I also think, you know, lodging tax revenue is, should be considered a KPI, you know? I think the different taxes that are related to travel and tourism can be considered as KPIs as well. And I'll relate it just real quick to the Tourism Development Fund. I mean, we're funded on three-eighths of 1%. So that is a very critical source of funding as, you know, obviously, CCCTA with lodging tax as well. So I think that is something that should be quantified and measured, and I know it is, but I think it should be put front and center as a, as a KPI, you know? Specifically here, I'd be talking about Carson City County tax-related. So those would be some, some KPIs off the top of my, my head. Obviously, I think if we could get a sales program up and running, you know, here with CCCTA, I think that would lend itself to looking at appointments, you know, from different trade shows and sales missions and quantifying the impact of bringing business here from tour operators and travel agents, from receptives, you know, as well, you know, probably Bay Area would be more, more appropriate for the Carson City area. But that would definitely be something, you know, with a sales program, I would, I would look at trying to quantify those appointments. We do this, as an example, at Travel Nevada by following up when we send our sales team to a show, and say it's over in the UK. WTM, World Travel Market, could be ITB in Berlin. We follow up with those leads. It does take time, typically 18 months, 24 months, right? By the time you, they go through their process to get Nevada into their product, right, as an, as an option for visitors. But I think that would definitely, from a sales program side, be something I would love to be able to implement on the CCCTA front because I think it really shows the value of being at a trade show or being a part of a sales mission and what do you get, you know, for going and spending three or four or five or sometimes seven days, you know, at one of these shows? Does it result in people putting Carson City into their product, right? And this area becomes a part of a package, you know, if it was a travel agent, for instance, or a tour operator? So those would be some KPIs that I would have off the top of my head. I also think, switching on the industry side, I think, I think there's something to be said about, you know, again, how do you engage with the industry here collectively, right? And maybe trying to put some metrics together around that and maybe that has to do with the grants, you know, grants applied for, grants received. That could be a particular KPI as well, you know? How many grants do we apply for? How many grants do we receive money for? How much money do we ask for? How much money do we get? I think those are some, and then quantifying, you know, the results of those grants that you receive as well. And especially if applying for funding for special events, doing the appropriate backend analysis of that event. I think that's an important KPI as well, you know, for, for consideration for you all on the board.
Thank you. Couple more questions. Thinking back on your career, tell me about the project you're most proud of and why.
Well, I'll be honest with you. The, the thing that I am most pleased with was building a research program and being given the opportunity by the executive director at the time to create a research program for Travel Nevada and for the Division of Tourism. When I started, actually, there are a couple of things. Research is, would be my first love. I also built a parallel accounting system for the Tourism Development Fund as well that would allow the exec director at the time and the program managers to be able to actually have accountability for their budgets on a program level. So that's something that I was, I'm very proud of as well, having built a parallel accounting system to the state's, a sort of antiquated system, but really the research program. Because what that allowed was for us to be looked at, at the time, again, Commission on Tourism, to be looked at as a credible entity. We conducted all different types of research, you know, whether that was ad marketing effectiveness study, web usability studies, equity perception tracking studies, testing, believe it or not, the idea of testing ads before you launch a $5 million campaign, right, to make sure that they work, they're engaging, they're conveying the, the brand correctly. And what that allowed, too, is, for me personally, I think it allowed me to then kind of parlay that research development and that data that we were starting to collect, whether it be from the website, to then basically move in the direction of having e-marketing, which Travel Nevada or Commission on Tourism at the time, they didn't engage with any of their consumers, right? So you had hundreds of thousands of people requesting visitor guides, right? And nothing was being done with that data. It was sitting on a DOS program, if I, if I recall, in California, you know? And so from developing, creating, building that research program, it kind of led into building an integrated CRM, call center and fulfillment operation and tying all of the different, these disparate data sources together. So we were, you know, 3, 4,000 calls way back when a month. What were people asking for, right? You know, just simple things like that. Putting the right questions together and running teleservice scripts, right, that would tie back into a CRM database with 3, 400,000 people that were requesting, you know, visitor guides by, well, through phone, through the website, through write-ins, mail-ins, et cetera. So, again, my background from the casino side was what we did with direct marketing, you know, for the different Caesars and Park Place Entertainment properties to try and establish something like that for Travel Nevada, all this rich data, you know, all these people requesting information to, to create a dialogue with these folks and understand what is they want to do when they're visiting? What are they looking to see and where do they want to go and stay? So I think creating that research program really opened the doors to then taking and really creating a CRM program, which is a customer relationship management, sorry, for the acronym, and leverage all this different data that we had that was housed all over the place and trying to get that data into a single repository. And the thing that excites me most about that is now, and we were super close about three or four years ago, to really getting into this personalized communication with people. And I have no doubt, within a year, we will be there in terms of our outbound communications with consumers, whether that be an email on our social media channels or the website itself. Again, kind of this idea, wherever you are, we are touching that customer, that consumer, showing them images, videos that relate to what it is they've already told us about themselves. And so I'm, I'm super excited because I think next summer, we're, we're going to be there, you know? And again, this is, it's taken a long time, mind you, to see this come to fruition, but I'm very excited. We're close. I think we're about, about a year out. I think we're about, about a year out. But again, this goes back to building a research program, being data informed or data driven and having a CRM in place that allows us with all the different things that we have going on, whether it's a Facebook campaign or a paid search over here, you know, our digital campaigns, to again tie all of that data back together on the consumers that are engaging with our marketing and our PR and our brand, you know? And again, telling, we're telling a story, but we also want to hear those, those stories back from, from our visitors. So yeah, so number one thing for me was having the trust of the executive director to, to build what I think is an amazing research program for the state of Nevada and Travel Nevada.
What was the biggest challenge you faced accomplishing that?
Oh my goodness. There were a lot. The biggest challenge, I will, I will be absolutely frank and honest with you, was with respect to our integrated marketing effectiveness study or originally our advertising effectiveness study and the ROI, that return on investment number that came out of that study based on the domestic marketing that we were doing. The biggest challenge with it, as soon as you put a number out there, and if I recall, our first number, I think it was $17 to a dollar. And I remember going over to the legislature during one of our budget hearings and Bruce Bomarito was the executive director at the time, we had bags of little gold chocolate coins, 17 of them for everybody. And the moment that we put that number out there, it was sort of the beginning of the end of, of the study from the standpoint that it was the only thing that everybody, legislature, our industry partners, everybody focused on was that one number. And you have to imagine, this is a hundred and something page report, right? A, a report that helps us with our mediums, the channels, the types of ads that we're running, the creative and how to appeal to somebody in LA versus Phoenix, right? It's sort of a guiding, it has been a guiding study for us as it relates to originally our paid marketing, now our paid owned and our earned marketing. But the challenge has been from the moment that that $17 went out, and then it went up, and then it would go down, and then it would go up, and then when you migrate from just marketing to adding owned and earned, it went up significantly, the credibility and nobody believing the number. And I, and I remember being in front of our, our own commission, when the number went up, oh, it can't be, it's too high, right? How, how can, how could it have gone up exponentially? And I say exponentially, but, and then if it dropped, oh my God, you guys must be doing something wrong. You're not using the dollars right, you know, you're not, you're not leveraging the marketing dollars. That has been a very big challenge and obviously it kind of came to a head in the last couple of legislative sessions. But as I, as I move the department itself forward into the next session, my approach will be to kind of back off this ROI, the single number out of 138 pages, that in and of itself, it means something, but it also allows everybody to forget about the other, let's say 137 pages of the report and what that information means. And to really, to back off and tell the story about tourism, you know, as we move into this session, if I may add, even though yes, research was, was my, my, my number one thing, I am super excited, again, I'm a researcher at heart. We have put out on our website, our first ever tourism ecosystem report. And this is specifically on lodging tax. And this is the story I'm going to tell as we move into the legislative session. What are these lodging tax dollars? $810 million was collected back in fiscal '17. Okay, we get about 25, 24, 25 million of that, right, as our three eighths of 1% at Travel Nevada. What's that other 785-ish look like? Where does it go? What does it do? And to kind of, again, tying back to the ad marketing effectiveness study, to let the lodging tax and how those dollars fund schools, police, roads, firefighters, the whole nine yards, let that kind of tell the story, sort of shift the focus a little bit from this ROI concept, but to talk about the overarching impact of tourism, but tell the story of lodging, from a lodging tax perspective. And that is the direction that we're moving in. So although this, this has been an issue, the ROI, I'm kind of changing how we're going to approach the next legislative session. And then our next goal will be to actually work with the Gaming Control Board and Department of Taxation to dissect the gaming tax and the sales and use tax and to tell that story and how tourism impacts both of those, those taxes. So again, it has not been without its challenges, the IME or the ad effectiveness study. And again, all related to one number, unfortunately. But yeah, so it's, it's, it's an ebb and flow, you know? But I think the, the good thing is, as I have always said to, to folks, if we're generating more than the dollar that we put in, we're doing a good job, you know? We're putting a dollar in, whether we get $10 or $50 back, we're getting more out of it than that initial dollar, you know, that we put into our, our paid owned and earned marketing and media efforts, so.
Tell us what makes you the best candidate for this position?
Well, I think I have the experience that you're looking for from a budgeting standpoint. Obviously, I've spent about 18 years or so doing different budgets on the private sector side, on the public side, putting together a 40 something million dollar budget this past August for Department of Tourism and Cultural Affairs. I understand research very well, again, having built a, a research program. I do understand marketing and public relations as well, you know? We didn't have all these big fancy agencies many years ago, and so there were a couple of us in the office, with the exception of television, I mean, we were doing media buying, right? And, and so I, I do have some good experience. I'm not saying I'm a professional media buyer or anything along those lines, but I do understand how media, paid owned and need to interact, right, and integrate and work together. I've obviously got administration on the grant side of things, which I think would come in very handy, applying for different grants on behalf of CCC TA. And I love tourism, you know, I, I don't know if I love tourism more than anybody else, but gosh darn it, it's a lot of fun, you know? And again, to sell this amazing destination, right now, I have the privilege and the honor of, of selling Nevada to the world and it is amazing. I, I can't tell you how much fun I have engaging with people around the world and telling the story of, of Nevada and it gets, it gets me excited. So I, more than that, I, I, I'm not sure what else to, to say. I just, I love this place. I, I love Nevada from Minnesota and Tahoe and Carson City and Carson Valley. It's the reason I'm here, believe it or not. So I don't know if you've had a chance to, to look at my application, but you know, you sold me many moons ago when I came out here in 1996 on, on this place and established roots and I've never left. So thank you.
So if you were selected for the position, how soon would you be able to start?
I can start in two weeks. I would, I mean, as a courtesy, I would obviously need to give the, the governor a two week notice.
Finally, David, do you have any questions for us or anything else you'd like to add before the interview's over?
Well, I have a couple of questions for all of you. What do you, what do you want to get out of the next executive director? Directionally, I mean, where do you see CCC TA going, let's say in the next year?
Well, I'll start. I think certainly building on the direction and the progress that we've made in the last few years and that the, the board and, and the CTA has made. We want to keep that positive direction going forward. Someone, I'm looking for someone who has a passion for Carson City and, and the area, someone that can take us to new levels, you know, in research. All those things are the things I'll be looking for in the next year.
Yeah, I can say the same thing. I'd like to see somebody that comes in here and builds on the foundation that Joe and his team have built and somebody that believes in our community and believes in what we're doing here as a community and somebody that's generally interested in making it a better place to live and drawing people to this community.
And I want to see the coordination with our arts and culture coordinator and the funding as it is or more if possible, because I feel that, that, that connection builds community and I understand data and all of that, but I also understand building community and that attracts as well, has a value.
And for myself, I'd like to see more international visitors come here because really that's truly what the, the CTA is about and bringing that room tax, which filters down to everything else. But the passion of that person loving Carson City like us, like we do, is very important as well. And data, love it, love it. Thanks.
Yeah, and I'll just build more on what Karen said. Yeah, there's a lot of different groups and players within our area and, and having, you know, someone who can build the relationships with everyone, not only being arts, but with the city and the different events, someone that can bring everybody together. Any other questions for us, David?
No, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to, to be here today and to be able to talk with you and share with you my, my absolute love for tourism and, and this place here in Carson City, so. Now, I didn't take all my Douglas County stuff to put it in front, you know, to light it a fire, just so you know. And I don't know if, if offered the position, what I'll tell my kids when I'm not sitting on the sideline with their mom, but you know, we'll, we could work that out down the road. So anyway, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and to answer your questions today. I'm grateful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why don't we take about a 10 minute recess and what the board members get their thoughts together and we'll, we'll be back at it. Thank you.
One thing quickly, just before we go into recess, just want to make a matter of record that the packets that you received as a board today with all of the applicant information and the questions is available to the public at the back table and it will be posted on the, the CTA website at the conclusion of the meeting.
Great. Thanks. Thanks. Well, I think we can come back from recess now. I've, you know, reflecting back on the last few hours about how lucky we are to have such three strong candidates and with a passion to do their best for Carson City and the surrounding area. So, very difficult. You've made it very difficult, I think, on everyone up here. And I'll say it again, I don't know if we could make a wrong choice. But with that, we're tasked with making a choice. So, I think I'll start with Mike, and you could tell us your thoughts. Let's put you on the spot first. There were so many Mikes.
I'm glad he looked that way, though, because I would have said, "Me, Ole, I'm more than..."
And then we can go there.
Did I just turn gray?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here and congratulating each and every one of you on being the top three. And you guys certainly didn't make our decision easy, and for, to me, that's a good thing. We had three qualified candidates, and I'm very proud that you guys came forward and applied for this position to make our jobs harder. But with that being said, one candidate did stick out or stand out to me, and that was Sheri. And it was Sheri's views on how she would work with her staff, that she would, to me, a good leader is when they wouldn't ask their staff to do anything that they wouldn't do. And so, that, to me, shows good leadership, that she's willing to get in there and get her hands dirty and do what needs to be done. And also, your experience in the grant writing and that you know Carson City. You've been here, you know what's going on. And so, with that being said, my choice is for Sheri.
Karen?
Well, this is tough because you all made it tough. But I am looking at the fact that we need to continue the momentum of where we are and take it to the next level. And the tourism ecosystem knocked it out of the park for me. And I just have to say, it is an ecosystem. And understanding all those various aspects of how it all comes together to create a successful tourism authority for Carson City is invaluable and important to me. And I just feel that David brought that. And I think that's important for arts and culture going forward, and I think it's important for our community going forward. So, and just to let you know, there was only one point difference in the scoring system, so that's how tight this was for me. So...
Thank you.
Ditto on the challenge here. Really, Sheri, I love the fact that you're a native Nevadan, and you grew up here, and you know about Nevada. The things that you have done with the cultural, with Stewart Indian School, with all that is just so impressive and amazing. I do believe that that is a hidden element that really needs to be brought out further to bring more people to Carson City. And I think that with David's professionalism, working on the state level, on the bigger picture, and a data-driven guy, that I think that he and you will be able to bring that, make that happen. Excuse me. So, David, I am kind of a driven numbers guy. Being a small business owner, you know, accountability has a lot to me, and that was impressive for me. So, I think that you've definitely shown the ability to work with others, and it was not an easy decision, but my vote is for David.
All right, thank you. Boy, that leaves the other mic on the hook. That's, yeah, thank you. Again, very, very difficult decision. Three applicants that are extremely qualified, that bring, as I mentioned earlier, lots of compassion and passion and just, you know, everything to the position that we could ask for. I do, I love the ecosystem also comment. Karen, I thought that was a good way to put it. David, again, my scoring was extremely close also, as was Karen's, just a couple points apart. I love the research side of your position, David. I love the passion of Sheri and the fact that she's grown up in the community, understands the community, and has really lived the community for most of her life. So, that, to me, counts as a lot. So, I'm going to throw the whole process into another mess because I'm going to vote for Sheri. So, we're tied at, so I guess we have to go back and do some more work. I'm not quite sure how this will work, Ben. Maybe you can help us through it.
Well, if you want to continue discussion or deliberation, or if somebody wanted to make a motion and you could see where it goes, but unfortunately, you know, there's no system for tiebreakers that we could implement, so you'll just have to...
We're going to have to work it out amongst yourselves.
Work it out, yes, exactly.
Okay. Well, one of us has to, I guess, relent. Again, I'd like to hear a little more from you, Mike, on your choice for David and the strengths, because there really are some, they're very close, so...
Well, again, you know, I'm a small business person, and I liked what David had to say. It's really, it's a lot of who David is. He's definitely into the research side of things. I think that the team now that Joel has built and the things that the platform, the ground floor that has been put together over these last many, you know, four or five years, I think David has that edge, especially coming from a state level. And I think that, yeah, when it comes to grant funding, he's going to have a little bit more of an edge on that. But I also believe that he clearly understands that sales rooms tax is really the funding mechanism of this organization. And I think that he'll be able to provide us with the numbers, and he definitely shows the ability to work with others. And I like his big-picture view, and I think that that's really where we need to go, because Joel's group has done great, don't get me wrong, but there's an element there that I believe David can bring to the table that will definitely benefit Carson City as a whole. And I guess we're, to me, that's very, very important.
All right. Karen?
I have to agree with Mike on the big-picture view. That is exactly where I'm coming from. I feel that there's a, we are the capital city, and I feel that enlarging that picture view and that second night stay and that reason to come back and that sort of a mindset is important going forward. And I also liked some of his thought processes for expanding the uses at the MAC. They were different. And I also liked the fact that above and beyond our downtown, he brought up the Fandango Convention Facility and things of that nature. These are all aspects that we need to capitalize on to grow who we are and bring folks in. And so, I think that it's all important in terms of, and I feel he has the ability to work well with others and to bring into the fold those that maybe we're not in touch with. So, that's my thought.
Mike, any more thoughts?
You know, listening to Mike and Karen, we do need to bring all of our assets together, and we do need to look at the future and have some new and fresh ideas coming in. And, you know, I think everybody, or the three candidates that applied, these three people, they each had their own ideas, and they had some great ideas, and that's why the vote ended up the way it did. So, I think no matter who we go with, we're going to be in great shape. And so, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, I do agree with everyone about the picture going forward and where we need to be looking and the fresh ideas. And, you know, certainly, you know, I maybe missed a couple steps about Fandango and the MAC. Those are on the forefront of, I think, everyone's agenda, along with arts and culture driving it. So, I think if we can get a motion...
I move to approve the CTA Chair, Mike Jones, extend an offer of employment to David Peterson to be the Executive Director of the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passed.
Okay.
Again, I want to thank all of you for coming here today. Again, I knew at the end of all the interviews that this was going to be a difficult task, and everybody said it. I don't think we could have made a wrong choice here today. And thank you all very much. With that, we'll move on to action, item seven, to appoint the CTA Board Chair and Treasurer to negotiate the terms of employment with David Peterson selected by the CTA Board to be the Executive Director. The CTA Board will approve CTA Chair, Mike Jones, and Treasurer, Mike Santos, to negotiate the terms of employment with the applicant selected by the CTA Board as their Executive Director. The negotiation will include the start date, beginning annual salary, a salary, approved range of $106,000 to $170,000, relocation expenses if applicable, vehicle allowance, phone allowance, and insurance transition plan if applicable.
Mr. Chairman, could you give me one moment to change tapes? To change recording?
Sure. Motion?
I move to approve the appointment of the CTA Board Chair and Treasurer to negotiate and execute the terms of employment with the applicant selected by the CTA Board to be the Executive Director.
All in favor?
We need a second first, don't we?
I'll second that.
Okay.
And aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The nays? Motion carries. Next, on number eight, board comments or announcements or requests for information? Anything from anyone?
I just, again, want to thank all the applicants. This was hard, really hard. And I'm amazed at the quality of who has applied here today. That's just, it's incredible, and I think it speaks volumes. So, thank you.
Again, thanks. Next, I'll ask for any public comment. Hearing no public comment, we'll move for number 10, possible action to adjourn. Move? Okay. Motion. Meeting adjourned.